You know what, I'll just sit right here and try to...
Hold me doors, down the clock, is anyone? The liberty to constitute the United States of America in a free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to call, Dan Hunt?
Yeah.
Dan Van Duren?
Yeah.
Jeff Corpen?
Yeah.
Somebody... There's a copy of the draft minutes if you guys want to read them, anybody wants to read them.
Guest speaker, may I have Mr. Parker here?
I just wanted to bring out your review over here. Too much shattering. The good news is if you turn in to take advantage of the safety, I don't think you're actually deferring nothing you did last year. I don't know, I don't think last year you had anything to turn in, but if you do this year, the second page is what all you could turn in if you want to take advantage of that. If you did anything for, if you went into any seminars for FOs or trust fees or any kind of cost of fees you might have paid. Anybody got a certification for a herbicide or pesticides applicator? Bring EMVRs, buy any kind of safety equipment, you'd have eyeglasses, seal paint booth, hard hat, reflective vest, or anything like that. But the bottom line is you can turn that in and get $300 off. If anybody bought last year.
Can't take anything anymore.
This is for 2000, oh, last year, January, December?
Well, it would be from June to June.
Oh.
June last year to June this year. So, if there's anything coming up here, you can still turn that in too.
So, everyone's got to spend some money to get $300 off.
Well, if you're going to buy it anyway, it's not a good idea. Does anybody have any questions or anything, or?
We get the full amount back, minus tax?
I'm sorry?
We can get the full amount minus tax back?
Yeah, yeah, anything, you can, you can add up to, up to $300.
That lasts not very long to you, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, really try to, just keep the phone in.
They wanted a safety shirt spot this year?
I don't think they've got that. Safety glasses, maybe $9 or something.
Anything you can think of?
Well, that's your number.
Yeah, just the fill-up, have you been filling out before, they're on the back, I think it's a receipt. Yeah, for sure.
You have a contract with it too, or?
I didn't bring it, no. Really, all they would need to do is like, you just say you want to stay and do it, run it, sign it, and that.
When did, when is that deadline?
Uh, June 15.
Did it go up, come on?
Uh, if it...
Do you know?
It was, uh, it went up $219 for the difference.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, and that was really because we increased the value on the one through the way pickup of $10,000, and we had a free smoke cloud for totally $18,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Wanting to make a motion to do that tonight, or do you want to do it tonight?
So, I could put the safety tactics, the orders, green ones with the tape on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other guest speakers? Correspondents?
I do. I got a notice from Ohio Emergency Management Association. We're still trying to finish up the paperwork with the storm damage from us last year. And I need a motion to authorize me to sign any documents that need to be signed. And I don't want you guys to sign them.
I'd make a motion.
But I'm allowed.
That's your allowed, uh, sign where?
And I'll sign it?
Second. Roll call, Ben?
Yeah.
Dan?
That's the letter there?
Yes. Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
If anybody's wondering, that's for us to, uh...
Get reimbursed.
You can reimburse about $1,000 with the equipment and material labor. About $1,000, is that, nine?
Seven thousand.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Really? You can reimburse all the equipment, labor, and spare will be used for...
Jeff, were you saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, we've got our Ohio Emergency Management Association member cards in mail from Phyllis. Um, letter from our salt supplier. You know, we participate in the state bid, and we are required to purchase 80% of what we said we would purchase. And since we did not purchase any, they are requesting us to purchase some now. And what is required for us to purchase is 35,000, or 35 ton, 35.2 ton.
We got, we got nothing for 35?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that was the other question. If we don't have room for it, we would have to pay for the salt, have them store it, and pay them to store it. But we do have room for 35 ton?
Yeah.
How much is a ton?
About 50, 60.
I believe it was 60 a ton, I think.
And that 35.2, that was?
Yeah.
That's 80%, right?
Right.
Yeah, I'd say just...
So, I can go ahead and call them and have them set up for delivery?
Wait, we did that?
Yeah, no, I just...
So, you're telling me 80%?
Okay, 35 ton, 35.2.
Then contact...
Okay. Yeah, I think I'll need to make sure someone's here to deliver it. I got newsletter, I don't know if you guys all get that too. There's a catalog for some products. I received a letter from the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of State Farm Marshal's Office, um, about the grant that we applied for with Licking Township Fire Company. I didn't see that right then. We did not get the grant this year. It says that more than $6.5 million worth of equipment was requested by the applications, and the need was greater than the funding available. These requests greatly exceeded the $1 million available for 2013. So, we did not get that.
Did they copy that to the chief too, or?
I don't think so. They probably sent...
They probably sent one there to Licking Township too, I imagine.
I received a letter in the mail. It was copied to us. It's, um, requesting horses be removed from somebody's property. I'm not sure what, I don't know what we have to do with that exactly. A letter about, um, health department offering mosquito control. We're not interested in that, I don't think so. And that's all I have. All right, so I have the email about the permissive, but I have that under new business, permissive, under vehicle. That's, that's all.
Got a disordered, uh...
I don't know what we have to do with horses.
Okay, yeah.
Is that from a resident, is that getting there, or?
Yeah, it's from a resident.
Remove horses?
Uh, I think it's a non-issue to the town, that's it. I get a copy of that somewhere, I guess.
I guess you're talking to him, I don't know.
I like a couple things that correspond to us. Um, one of them, Pach 33, the Boy Scout troop that did a letter cleanup for us on Honda Hills Road. They did that for us last week. They just baited that every, every year, can do a good job doing that, so definitely want to thank them. Um, also want to thank, um... That guy named, came out with us the other day, Jay, Steve, uh... Steve Harrington, he's with the Licking, he's with Licking County Court System. Um, he does work with community service workers. This month in April, they gave us about 200 hours of free labor, um, through community service workers. We used them for several things. We had them picking up trash, uh, one day on Rankin Road. Definitely did a good job there picking up trash. And then we used them four days last week to help us, um, do some tree trimming. So, all along this month, we got about 200 hours of free labor from them. Um, it's going to be an ongoing thing, if we want to keep doing it. They're willing to give us at least one, two days a month, um, for whatever we, you know, want to help them, so. It's a good thing. Um, one other thing I had was, I know we talked about putting a merit around back end in April. It's been soggy, been wet, and then also, um, we need to order a few more pieces of edging board to go around the playground. So, we're going to shoot for May for sure. Uh, it should dry up, and we'll get it in there. Just kind of keep everybody up to date on that. That's all I have for today.
Yeah, uh, got a letter here from Ohio Insurance Services, you may have got that too, from Megan, just thanking us for our business. The Board of Elections contacted the poll workers already, they gave us the time that they need to set up. And delivered times Monday, May 6th, but Monday from now. Tended the OSU Extension Advisory Board. Learned about a program there that the county library's going to be doing, it's called the Licking County Sprout Seed and Share Library. So, get those fingers interested. And you probably got this too, it's a notice of a meeting from Licking County Plane Department, 6 o'clock, May 20th, 2013. Uh, it's for text amendments to the open space. Had some residents contact me. On the trees, got one for your list here, get done. Lady's name says Hanny Phipps, far end of Rankin Road, uh, tree that's right by the fence. So, there's one that, I don't know how you've been doing this, but, you know, that's one to put on the list, do them, and when they come back. The workers that are coming out, that, you have to schedule it, or?
We didn't get up there, we pointed to, we just...
Do you know which street it is?
Yeah, several of them out there need to cut.
Okay, this is by the fence, right in there, second house from me. So, that's, that one. Also, Marcia Spinazola called, had quite a few concerns, understanding the mission there, and you can agree on what's going on. Uh, she said that there was a kind of verbal altercation there with you and the two workers, had to do with issues associated with their road. She also called the other night, and, uh, there's a question about somebody that goes on 40, I don't know which home it is there. There's planted some trees there, possibly in Bowling Green Town, 6th Street, so... Well, that was probably not the issue you were talking about, but maybe you can, what, what did you talk to her about?
What did you talk to her about, library, and what your...
When you were there, when you were there talking with her, she was quite upset, so...
Sure, sure. Uh, it was, it was kind of awesome, it, it kind of kicked off as I got a call from her, and, uh, she was pretty upset because she had called one trustee, and the trustee was Jeff Corpen, um, several times over a month-long period, and you had failed to get back with her, uh, or to remedy a problem she had. So, she called me, and I said, "Sure, Marcia, I'll stop down, see what's going on." So, um, she was concerned about some gravel and, um, some gutters that run off a neighbor's garage, uh, some runoff from water. And also a ditch, so I stopped out with Jack and Donnie. Started to discuss some things, whether she demanded that we reroute the water that comes off the neighbor's garage. I told her that's not a township issue, that would be a property or dispute, that has nothing to do with us. Then she proceeded to, um, you know, complain about gravel that was in the alley. And we kind of tried to explain to her where the property lines were, and where the driveway was. And I just went with it. She accused myself and township workers of some things that weren't true. And I wasn't going to put myself or my workers in a situation of any kind of confrontation, so that discussion ended with a...
So, where do you go from there, Mike?
It's a non-issue.
When she called about these trees, she didn't feel like whatever problem was in there, it was resolved.
I had no idea what trees were popping up, she never discussed the trees with me.
That was, I can kind of look at them up there, so I can tell you. But she was, lady, she wasn't satisfied with whatever you had discussed there. Saying that to do with the trees, that was the tire thing.
I had no idea what trees were popping up, it's on Bowling Green Street?
Yeah, somewhere up there.
There's a lot of trees on Bowling Green Street?
Well, they shouldn't be in the street, or...
There's a lot of trees that line Bowling Green Street, I mean...
It's between her place and Beach Street, it's not that big of a, that's where I'm figuring she's talking about. Like I said, I haven't been up to see where the trees planted, so, but the other issue, you know, that's where she...
Well, go up, go up and take a look at it, talk to her, go up and take a look at it, and bring it to the next meeting, huh, it's no problem. No, didn't it?
Let's see what you want to do.
What you want to do?
What, what you want to do about it?
It'd all be helpful if you just go up and remedy the problem.
I can't remedy a problem with some kind of altercation you had, so...
Did I say that?
No, she did. I have no reason to disbelieve her, her story.
Why? Okay. Why wasn't, why wasn't the issue addressed for a month when she called you several times? I have no reason to disbelieve her that she called you several times and it went on for a month. Why wasn't the, the problem, you know, remedy that, why didn't you go take a look at it?
These issues you're talking about with this, uh, gathering, she says, and you've issued a town for a long time.
It's never been brought to me, it's never been brought to you?
Well, that goes way back, Dan, we were out there before. So, as far as the issues with the stones and whatever you did, I don't know what it was, I just know she was upset, and hopefully it can be resolved somehow.
There's nothing to resolve, I mean, there is a problem left, I'm not going to put myself or my working in a situation to start a competition, have a competition, or be accused of anything, so... You have something different?
Yeah, she told us to get the electric company out there and the telephone company, and move it and pull it out towards 40. So, I think you ought to go talk to her, Jeff, you started this a few years back.
I'll be happy to go talk with her, it's not a problem.
Take your old tape recorder, you get all the facts.
Might even work it terrible.
Yeah. You have another correspondence? Reports on the safety, um, the only thing I had was, we had some work done on the red, uh... Nothing? Fire company? Nothing? Jay?
Uh, April 3rd, Brad and Tricia Morehead obtained a permit for new construction at 9116 Somerset Road. And I have updates on, uh, two of the violations that were brought forward to you. 16249 Royal Hill Road update, no lots led has been produced as of yet. Licking County Environmental Health Department is investigating the property. Uh, they are, they contacted me and will get me informed on what's going on. 14282 National Road, uh, no action's been taken from the prosecuting attorney as of yet, and the health department is also investigating that property as well. I also have a question regarding two signs that I've had calls on. Honda Hills sign, the big Honda Hills advertising to go back there and do the four-wheeling and all that. And also Urban U. The question is, why are these signs there when there's no business? So, what does the township feel we should do?
Is there any kind of grandfather rule for this? If they're there? Kind of grandparent? That's not under court, right, those are two new things?
Excuse me?
I don't see that under court, those are two new things, the signs?
Yeah, I just said I had a question, that's I got a call.
Oh, I just didn't see it, so that's why I'm asking. Um, so that our grandfather and...
Not that I'm aware of, there's nothing in ours, and it states its grandfather with signs and businesses, no. It's a business sign, and both of them are on court.
What's deserving reading on this?
It's very vague, your signs are very vague. Should I contact Licking County, since it's on Route 40?
And get a penny from them and ask them.
Okay.
Is that it, what?
That is it.
Is that the other?
I, I can tell you why the health department's out to my house, if you want to know.
Go ahead.
But Mr., my neighbor, Mr. Nosenberger, he called, EPA, and the health department. Um, for burning, I was burning some two-by-fours out of an old local home. And you're not allowed to do that. You're not allowed to burn any wood on your property unless it grew on your property. You can burn pine trees, but not a fine two-by-four. And the, the, uh, health department came up, because I'm going to plant potatoes in some tires, and Mr. Nosenberger called the health department about my new cap site and my, uh, uh, my running for free in my field that belongs to me that I paid for, which I don't feel good about his business, my own. That's what Mr. Nosenberger did, lives next door to me.
Yeah, make a comment? Health department's not investigating anything that he just said. And that would be the Collins that are the next door, it's not Nosenberger's. They are getting, they are investigating all of their suits that they have everywhere.
On this first part, it says, uh, no lot has been, has been produced?
I didn't hear you.
Are you still waiting on the county or something?
I'm wait...
I'm talking to a resident, man. Are you still waiting on the county or the health departments? You want to make sure that it's finished?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
They get, did they have finalized it yet?
Yes, sir, they, that's the talk with the Mr., what's that dude's name? In the health department? No, in the planning committee?
Brad and, uh, the surveyor should have got together, because I know that Brad emailed me and copied the surveyor. And the surveyor said he was making up the deeds.
So, they are working on...
Whatever it is, you have to make up, he's, he's writing them up, descriptions.
After the last meeting, he said that it hadn't gone anywhere, just wanted to make sure it was still processed like it's supposed to.
Last time I talked to both of them, the, uh, surveyor said he was writing up the deeds, descriptions, I said it wrong, descriptions. And I got the measurements and everything of what the driveway has to be. And, uh, the surveyor's writing up what has to be around the building.
Will just keep us updated, you know, when that gets completed?
Sure, yes, sir.
And the surveyor, I'm sure, will be out as soon as he wants to get paid. I'm sure.
All right, will just keep us, you know, just inform us, like, definitely, all right, thank you. Zoning board, zoning bills. Comprehensive plan, park committee.
I've got some Rock 40 yard sale flyer, flyer, all that, if anybody's interested in it. And I've got this. And I got a $65 round, and a $25 round, and a $25 round, and a $75 round, $25 round. And we made $172.50 on the bake sale for Easter.
Wow, you're a good, you're a good trooper, thank you.
Busy name for it.
Yes, yeah, yeah, probably.
Can I have that stuff before class Sunday? Because I put, I needed it last month, but he wasn't here, but I didn't get it.
Pimple towels, some toilet bowl cleaner, all-purpose cleaners, back door fix, okay.
Yep.
I'll make sure that stuff is here, there, by last Sunday.
I'll be calling up the names of the sign.
The health department, we got, uh, the Nosenberger call. And I got the flat metal tree, that's it, all right.
Keep it, I just need to copy that for a bit. Unfinished business, trash, I don't have any port on that. Last, last thing I did was I called Big O, talked to, uh... Last, last thing I did was I called Big O, talked to, uh, his name was Mr. Queen. Told him that the township wanted, I guess, a yearly, uh, yearly update of how everything was going. He said he would work on that. I also asked him if he had any complaints. If he had any complaints, he said that he was, um, unaware of any. You know, recently, anything in the past, you know, three months? He said no. Uh, he was, he was unaware of any, so. I still definitely do, you know, follow up with him. If you do have anything, let me know. Um, but that was six, eight weeks ago. If, uh, you.
Did you get this email?
Yes.
I did not. Cause I wasn't sure if it was there. About where.
The CMI still picking up the Dogwood Lakes? Yes.
Still picking up on Royal Hill?
That one by the butcher. I saw that. Do you know what that was?
The name Paul, Paul Milligan.
I'll get it too when I get home. I got it written down.
Anybody know anything about National Road or Boundless Road? Those are these two, um. Um, you got a copy of the trash jacket? It was a letter from Amy's.
Sounds like she needs some more facts on that stuff.
She wanted to know if they were still picking up in those areas. When did they violate the contract? Did CMI ever comply with this single contract? Uh, if so, was it the violation date? Be the start of the trash contract. So that's what we need to reply to her.
It would be starting now.
Yeah, if they.
Yeah, they've never had.
They've never stopped, as, as far as I know. I mean, we've. You know, people said that they've been picking up since they started. Also says, I also want to let you know that I will need a check for a hundred and fifty dollars from the township in order to file the complaint with the common police court. I wanted to give a heads up, uh, so the board could appropriate the money. Uh, if we're gonna proceed forward, I'll make a motion that, uh, we make sure that prosecutor office gets a check for a hundred and fifty dollars to file a complaint with common police court. For the violations against CMI.
I noticed you don't have the checks for tonight. Do you have those?
I have the checks. I just did not put them on the back.
Is that?
I don't have the hundred and fifty dollar check. So I'm not sure what you guys, but you're making a motion to do that.
Yes, please.
Is there a second to the motion?
No, I'll second.
What is the motion to, to file with common police court?
To, um, make out a check for a hundred and fifty dollars to prosecutor's office so they can file a complaint with common police court.
Do roll call, Ben?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
No.
Are you still unfinished business?
Um, well, we've got a couple more things. Does it have to do with trash?
No, right.
Okay. Anyone else heard of trash? Who knows? Uh, road bids, we need to, um, make a motion to put out the road bids to cover Somerset Dogwood Lakes.
That'll do as much. No, we need that, it's like June, July, isn't it? I think it's June, July, it's already marked up, what, wouldn't it?
Well, we'd be, we'd be good.
Is there a reason to wait?
I don't know. That's the question. Is there?
No.
I don't see why, how would you think?
Soon we get them in, we saw it get done?
Yeah, it's, just go ahead and intercept your bids and then, uh, open the next meeting.
Next one? That's for all Somerset Road?
Yeah.
Dogwood Lakes?
Mm-hmm.
Inch and a half?
Well, either.
Two inches.
You've got price one inch and a half and about two inches.
It has to match the specs of the grant.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Which one? Two incher.
I'll have to, I think it was an inch and a quarter or an inch and a half.
Remember we lowered it so we could get the grant.
I'll, I'll have to make sure. I'll let you know.
All right. Uh, received by the next business manager?
When do you get that package together? I'd like a copy of that, whatever the grant packages or the bid packages that you sent out.
Do you want you to be the contact person?
Yeah, okay. Well, that's today, May. It's on the twenty-eighth.
I'd like to see that before it goes out, if you don't mind.
See what?
The package that you give anybody that, that requests the bid.
You wanna see it too? The motion that you made out?
Yes.
You made that motion?
I'll second.
Roll call. Ben?
Yeah.
Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Do you guys have anything else in your own sort of business? Dan?
Hmm. I don't think so.
Long day in the North Coast?
Yes. Just unfinished business. I feel America around still undone it. I feel this fourth county could be, uh, recommended for, uh, killing something out of the playground. If you guys ain't gonna read something up, he should pay to put that thing back in there. What's gonna stop him doing something else where you guys had it? There's a vote, like, that thing wasn't supposed to come out. He would've had still done it. I know less has been applied, but the problem is, what's gonna be the next issue? Since he don't, you know, he's getting a paycheck. Why can't the taxpayers gotta put the bill, put that thing out here? I feel he should put the bill because he's the one who forgot it. So I just want to fact on record again, it's not finished. It's unfinished. And it's gonna be unfinished. My book tells you how awful. What he did is fair. That's the way I look at it. Because there was a vote on that board not to take something out. If me or Jack or this man or this man here or any of us did, you have to talk to him and they're after his requirements. So he's no damn different than I am. So I expect something to be done with the two trustees. Take it to prosecutor. If you can't go to the prosecutor, I don't care. Something needs to be stopped. He is not running this show. When he plays season two show and when the vote is all ready, no, you don't take something out.
There was no vote by the board.
Yes, there was.
Not to take something out.
Yes, there was.
No, sir, there wasn't.
Yes, there was.
On tape.
Yes, on tape.
There was.
I didn't even provide you with the record to show the vote.
They didn't say, they didn't do an official, you know.
But the word no, no, it is not gonna be removed, was set. And Jeff took it on sale, three would have stuck.
I didn't want it.
It is set. It is set. Just like when you stole papers, that's fact.
None of the, none of, none of the.
Now, I know in your eyes, nothing is. Never is.
The facts haven't changed on any of this stuff, by the line. So there's.
So it's so smug.
Yeah.
Why it cost everybody else money?
Right. You, you too much, he's done. It's being paid from taxpayers.
Well, he gets paid each month of the year.
Yeah.
For doing nothing.
Nothing. And once again, how much is it gonna cost us?
Unfinished business.
How much is it gonna cost us to put it back in?
To give an actual dollar?
Eighteen hundred dollars, he said. Fifteen to eighteen hundred.
Who said that? Ben, we moved a mo, you moved a motion to allot fifteen hundred dollars.
I didn't say that.
I believe that's what the motion was. That, that.
Fifteen hundred dollars. The taxpayer's gotta pay it. But you don't want to spend a hundred and fifty dollars to prosecutor for a trash bill. You'd rather us spend fifteen hundred dollars for a fact.
I voted no, Mr., so I, I'm not.
I know what you voted. I quite understand business.
He means that they want to send the money to stop the other trash company. It's not supposed to be picking up. Jeff, you're not that dumb.
Yeah.
Yeah, he is.
Well, my feeling's on it, the fact of the matter that we have more than one hauler that's picking out residential garbage. Uh, by moving that forward, I think it's a bad decision. But a township, then, you're taking actions against one hauler and not another. And, and I think that's a pretty precarious thing to do.
Have you seen another hauler picking up?
Where's your residential trash go, Ben?
I'm asking you.
Where does yours go?
For one, that's not your business.
It is my business. I guess, it, it goes right in that dumpster right there, doesn't it?
It is not your business. Answer my question. Have you seen another, have you seen another hauler picking up?
Yes.
So why haven't you brought that to the board or to prosecutor?
I had. They pick it up up here all the time.
Up here in town?
Residential trash goes, uh, yes.
That's a commercial dumpster.
That's not CMI. That's another hauler.
That's a commercial pickup. What don't you understand about this? Commercial residential. Do you get it?
I understand there's residential trash that you picked up and taken out. That's it. I think you should probably go down, since you put yourself in charge, and you should talk to the prosecutor, get her the facts.
Oh, trust me, I've been there.
Well, on the report, it didn't sound like we had gone anywhere with this.
Commercial. Really? Call her and ask her.
I don't.
I don't need to call her. Is that what you're gonna say? Do you need to do anything? Obviously not.
Well, it's been.
I'm not done talking to you about this, Jeff.
It's been on the agenda all year, and all of a sudden, this is how you react to it. She needs to have the facts.
How I reacted, we received an email from it, so we're responding to it.
She needs facts. And if you've been dealing with it like.
If you have facts of other, of other, you know, haulers picking up, state them.
Yeah, what's taking so long? It's been on there all year.
The normal spend.
Have you known about this all year?
Everything has been reported, this been going on. I'm not here to argue. I'm here to conduct business.
Well, so unless, obviously you're here to argue.
I just want to talk this. I wasn't arguing with you. You have feet, you know.
No, that's totally an act. We did get a red, we did get a correspondence from the prosecutor, and the bottom line is, these allegations, what are they? Ask it. There aren't any. Of what? There's nothing illegal been done with this merry-go-round, but you keep going around about it. The prosecutor clearly stated that there is nothing illegal.
Morally wrong.
Morally, Jeff. Come on. Are you serious?
You took something from our share.
I was taken out with two guys voting again and one vote before.
It was more wrong. That didn't happen.
Yes, it did. I was studying.
Nobody voted on.
There was an official motion.
There was a note.
How did you have the authority to do it on your own? It's three of you sitting there. It's just been one.
Do you have the letter from the prosecutor? Why don't we read it to you?
This is due on a rainy day.
God.
Indeed, so, you know, tried to sneak it in.
You don't answer my questions. You said.
No, I've said before, that whole process was more public than any of the grant probably ever has been.
Yeah, get real, Jeff.
You put something in out there that the kids can't even reach. I can't reach it.
There was, how many kids were here for, for the East Jankon? I'm gonna say at least forty, probably fifty. And you know how many kids could reach that? None. Not a one.
You got a ladder to put bowling screens in there.
That'll tell you something right there, Jeff. If you have to get a six foot step ladder, reach the top of that. There's something wrong with it.
How long are you gonna replay this one? Month after month?
You wanted facts. I'm stating the facts.
The residents are happy.
You know, obviously, there's a lot of people here that are pretty upset about this.
Just a rerun, Ben. Could we do some other business and take care of things?
Uh, excuse me, sir. This ain't a rerun. This is taxpayer money. Maybe you use taxpayer money, don't mean shit. It does, well, we gotta pay it, and you took something out there. We gotta put fifteen hundred bucks in. So don't you sit there like a hot dog, saying it don't mean nothing. You got fifteen hundred bucks, you can give me? Do you have fifteen hundred bucks? None. And if you do, you would've given it to us. So don't tell me that crap.
The money for that hurricane spinner was from a grant, and it's not even a taxpayer.
It's not the money for the hurricane spinner, Jeff. Now we're gonna deal with that again.
If I could have a merry-go-round, I could have a merry-go-round that you wasted the money for.
Nobody said to take it out. You chose to take it out.
So if we found some more.
How long are we gonna have this, Charlie? Ben, about three, nine, ten hours?
You read it. We'll have it till I'm done, Jeff, okay?
Okay, we'll have to, we'll.
Don't question me. Do you have a question, Dave?
Yeah, go ahead, Salmons first.
Are you in public comment yet?
No. Does that do with the, what's that do with?
Yeah, yeah, he brought up something about the trash dumpster up here, which he's done that in the past. And, uh, it's, if you remember, comes to the point where they ask the prosecutor attorney to come here and ask questions. And I gave, uh, proof that that was a commercial dumpster. Uh, they called the prosecutor attorney. I mean, he said everything was okay. He still says it is not, yes. So I just wanna make a point, meaning he brought that up, that the prosecutor attorney was here and said that was okay.
I'm not doubting a little bit. All right.
And we keep bringing up, keep bringing up about the merry-go-round, but he keeps bringing up about the dumpster.
Yeah. It's on our agenda. I don't know if you realize or not.
Hey, well, let's put the merry-go-round on the agenda for every month. I love that.
Motion for a hun, a hundred and fifty dollars to be spent. Two trustees voted yes to do it, to move it to court to go after one hog.
How about two, two trustees voted no to take out the merry-go-round, and it still got done?
I think that's a pretty serious thing, that our township is about to go into a legal situation being.
That's, that's why we have a county prosecutor.
That's your problem.
Then, then a little more quick, Ben. They have merry-go-round. They mean he took it out. Is he gonna have to put it back?
I doubt it.
What do you think?
Put that just the way it was.
He'll take pictures. Yeah. I can add you to.
Ben?
I'll tell you, when it goes in, we're not gonna sneak it in on a rainy day in December, that's for sure.
That's right.
The board moved a motion that it's gonna be done this month. That's what I recall happened.
In April, correct. And we just discussed it's gonna get done in May. It's been a little wet, Jeff, right? A little soggy? You know, you know how you guys tore up the yard, but you took the other one out and it was.
I told you, I'm not here. I repeat.
I'm not, I'm stating the facts.
Yeah.
Sure seems like it to me.
That's your personal opinion?
All right, new Ben.
Wait, Ben, I wanna give you this date while I have it on my phone, if you wanna know. Everybody knows what an opinion. Here's to Brad. Here's to me and Paul. That's the surveyor. And it was on April ninth, or sixteen, April sixteen. And he's saying that, that Barb said that building was too close, and he gave you the side yard, the area yard, and all of that. Then, uh, that was the last thing.
So that was, that's on April sixteen.
He sent, he sent that, the measurements, to me and Paul Bossart, which is the surveyor, April sixteen.
Well, we know you were, that just keeps up there. Okay, thank you. All right, new business.
I'm doing new business. I was going to land a machine and tractor and, and end up some prices on our new blade mower. And this is. Blade shot and the mowers, pretty well shot, too.
It's not, but they're done. That's one, it says manual offset that you can switch.
Yeah.
Do we have to put out the bed? If there was a certain amount?
If there was a certain amount, yes.
Well, when that stuff there, it's gonna be competitive no matter where you go.
Will it shake the glasses or?
When was the last time that this was put on? And how, what number is?
What? Bushel?
Yeah.
It was on there before we got, I got in here.
So it's been at least twelve years or so?
Oh, yeah, that's.
They're worn out. I mean, completely worn out.
Blades were clear out.
Well, there's no sense waiting on it. Should move forward, I think. Complete once a month.
What, what'd you think? It's probably, it's gone pretty crazy.
We passed, so.
Yeah, we'll be.
In what, low by June first?
It'll probably be closed on the.
What's that?
By, by June first.
Well, this is a good one.
It's up to you if you wanna move it forward now or if you wanna wait a month.
Do I make a motion?
You wanna do it now?
Make a motion for all this?
What do you think, Dan? Wanna wait a month and get another quote or?
No, I'd just go for it.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I, I wouldn't do that, since we didn't get too busy. I don't do that.
I'd be happy to second your motion, if you make a motion, Mr. Ben.
So did you make a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
I'll second it.
Let's get it done, be done with it.
Well, is there any more discussion?
It's gonna be new. What else?
Yellow, right?
Yeah, yeah, I have yellow paint on it.
Did they say how long it would take to get?
It'd probably take a couple of weeks to get it in.
Roll call, Jeff?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
I'll agree. Lessa, you want to get rid of the other ones, or we get those ones in?
Yeah, we can get rid of the others and get them in.
There's not much left on, do you wanna put them out there? The only thing I'd say maybe keep is that gearbox, if we're gonna scrap them, just keep that gearbox off there.
Yeah, it's windy.
There's not the left of it, but it's on the path of war out.
I know. Yeah, we'll, we'll see what
Yeah, we're so much different. What do they have, back there in the corner? They're named Goodwill or something, they're not worth anything, right? What do you think? Give them Goodwill? Get them out here? They're not worth anything, we won't get nothing out of them.
I think you'll fix them.
What do you think, Jeff?
About spoils?
There's two old saws back there, there's two old chainsaws that are, what, thirty years old?
I had both up and running a couple of years ago, but I know since you bought the two new ones, you probably haven't used them, right?
Couldn't get them running, and we did need them.
As long as they are around, we're not having a problem getting it done.
What is the blade, is that?
It's, uh, yeah, it's, uh
And then the center thing is a mower?
Yeah.
Arm mower?
No.
Yeah.
There's, there's a picture of that.
That's the mower?
Blade.
Blade.
This is more of a mower.
Okay.
Okay.
That's beautiful, alright, I just wanted to know what.
Alrighty. Would you just take us down to the steam room?
I don't know, is that what they need?
Do we have a calendar?
Yeah.
Yes, if they wanna check for just that, I can do that, just let me know.
Okay.
I'll have to get a guess.
Just go down and talk to them.
Or if they can just put it on our account, some of me and them boys.
Okay.
Then we'll do the check at the next meeting.
Okay.
Whatever they wanna do.
Alrighty.
Cause I know we have an account there, so.
Okay.
People wants to take care of us.
Well, anything else on new business, Jeff?
No, that's all I have.
Yeah, I have a, we need to make a motion to accept permanent appropriations, which is why I gave you guys
I'll second it.
Do you roll call, Jeff?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Dan? And then we have the most of motor vehicle registration fees, did you read that?
I just gave the, that's for putting tax on.
Additional tax?
On license plates. Yeah, you know about that?
Uh, yeah, I know about it.
Stuff like a five dollar, a dollar tax on it. Takes five dollar on license plates, I'm not there, but you guys.
Yeah, it would be five dollars per plate, I think.
Come on, motion on that, or just take no action?
It doesn't need a motion after that.
No, leave that to them.
Save you guys one, too.
Do you have a list somewhere, tonight's checks, that's what I'm
I do not. I, uh, was having some computer issues this afternoon. So I could not print the, I usually print that last one. I have all the checks with me, I just didn't print the list.
This one for Jeff there, that's last one, I already
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's right, those are March checks.
Another new business? You want a public comment?
I may have misunderstood, but when you said something about the minutes? Those are draft minutes?
These minutes up here, yeah.
Why are they a draft?
Until they're signed and approved, then they
We'll sign them at the end of the meeting, to approve them. She puts them out there for anybody in public to read, if anybody wants to, instead of her reading them at the beginning, she
That's right, but they shouldn't be a draft, a draft means they could be changed. The minute should be
They can be changed by the board.
Right, right.
That's amended, that's not a draft. When you present the minutes, you present them as they were spoken at the last meeting. And then you, each one of those guys should have a copy of those minutes before the meeting to read it. And then they, when you come to the meeting, you ask them if they have any additions or corrections, or if anything was amended. And they say yes or no, or they change it, and then they vote on it, and then you wouldn't have these problems with the merry-go-round and all these things. Because then they would catch those things in the draft and minutes.
There would still be somebody here that would never vote on it.
But a draft is a minutes.
I completely agree with what Mrs. Bryant says. I've said that for years.
You submit the minutes as is, and then they correct them or change them.
There would still be a draft until they
No, they aren't.
Okay.
They are the minutes of the meeting as taken off that tape recorder. And then they approve them either as is or as amended and corrected.
Draft means sample copy to me, maybe
It should be a sample copy.
It's a sample copy until they sign them.
No, it is not.
Okay.
It is not a sample copy until they sign it. They're supposed to be presented with the actual minutes of the meeting. And then they are supposed to either approve them, or approve them as amended and corrected, not as a draft copy. You go to any business meeting, and nobody gives you a draft copy of the minutes. And they should all have them before the meeting.
Oh, we do, we get them.
Not long.
Are you serious?
Before the meeting?
She said it's
They should have them at least two or three days before the meeting to read them. And then they know whether they need to make any amendments or corrections. What you have to do is get a book of Robert's Rules and Regulations for meetings.
I tried that once, Sally, I did. And then he rewrote the minutes. That's what happened. He, I gave them to him plenty of time ahead of time, and he just rewrote the whole set of minutes.
He can't do that.
Well, he did, and that's why I don't give them anymore.
I never rewrote any minutes that were accepted into the record.
I just watched the film.
We've got an audio tape, I'll take a peek and see what actually happened.
That's why you guys get in trouble, you don't pay any attention to what you said at the last meeting. If you'd voted no on the merry-go-round, and that had all been in the meeting, it wasn't, it is.
Yes.
You didn't vote on it.
We didn't make an official motion and a vote, but it went around the table, and we each discussed it. I said no, I don't want it out, they said no, I don't want it out. And guess what? There was no official
And neither one of us told him to take it out.
And it just happened, you know, and that's, it's crazy that we have to do that now, and prosecutor said, you know what, now you have to make a motion to do everything. Anything you wanna do, every single thing, you know? It, it's crazy that we have to do that. It was said on this table, plain English, that it did not, was not
I know, I was here. It is in the minutes, that they did not wanna take it out.
It is, it is stated in the minutes, that Dan said no, he did not want it out, and I said no, that, that I did not want it out. It's stated in the minutes, but we did not make an official motion and take an official vote.
Can I ask, why?
That's in August, on YouTube.
Why did anybody want it out? Why did anybody want it out? Tell, tell us why you wanted it out.
It was dangerous.
I'm asking him, I want him to tell me, why did you want it out?
Well, for
Just, I'll explain that.
Anytime you wanna, I'd say a full discussion, but I'd be happy to. Anytime I try to discuss anything at this board, I need to shut down or interrupt.
I never get that
Primarily Primarily
He never gives one.
See, there's your example.
We're gonna give, we're gonna give Jeff a few minutes to, to answer
Can you tell me? Cause I've always wondered this from back and forth, back and forth, why did it need to come out?
Well, everybody seems to, everybody loves the merry-go-round, has fun. It's fun, okay? But the fact of the matter is, we could have gotten our insurance rates lower if we would've met these recommendations and turned it in before a certain time. And it does not adhere to the recommendations in the federal safety guidelines. And that, in my opinion, is something that we, we should make our standard, because we're talking about the kids' safety. So that's my basic stance on it, without getting into all the minutia and everything, the details on it.
Okay, now can I ask you? So if it was put back exactly the way it was taken out, would it be safe or not safe?
It would still would not, exactly the way it was put out, well, it'd be in the same location. And there's several issues you have to look at. It's not, unless it's corrupted, it had all kind of lateral movement, you can't have that.
Wait, just the way it was?
Just the way it was, it had all kind of lateral movement. Uh, it didn't have a required, when I say required, recommended, they prefer, okay, recommended.
Totally different, required, recommended, okay, make sure you understand this.
Whatever you wanna call it, it doesn't have a governor in it to control the speed in, which is something
No, here.
Nobody there.
Okay, so, would everybody in here, would everybody in here be happy with it just the way it was?
Let, let me answer it this way, there was no reason that both of those piece of equipment could be in that park right now. Both of them could be there.
So there was no reason that it had to come out?
No, absolutely not.
It was not unsafe at all?
Nope, nope. If it had lateral movement, it could have been fixed. But you know what? I loved it after a boy, loving to death, I put him on it every day of the week. Every kid that went to that park, every single kid went to that park, got on that merry-go-round. Every single one.
Like you said, it's fun, nobody's disputeing how fun it was.
She told Mr. Corpenny not to take it out.
You guys sat there and said no.
We didn't want it out.
I said, but who told you not to take it?
We sat here and discussed it, and we said it is not coming
But he's told us they was taking it out.
When they first, let's go all the way back to the beginning of this, when they first started talking about this, they wouldn't even tell us what kind of piece of equipment they wanted to buy. They put a picture and a diagram on the back room with a jungle gym, a half round climber, okay, a jungle gym. But, but it was just in place of that, if you don't believe me, I can show you the picture, Jeff.
What happened to those diagrams?
The prosecutor has them, okay?
Good.
So that's what happened, so now they stuck the picture back here, and they say, this is what we wanna do, but this might not be the piece of equipment, okay? That's like going to buy a new car, and saying, I wanna buy a new Ford. But we're gonna show you a Chevy, but this isn't what you're gonna buy, okay? You know, you understand that.
The piece of equipment was shown in the spot where that was gonna be, and it wasn't determined at that point what it was gonna be.
Okay, so who told you to take it out, then? If nobody, if these guys didn't, who did?
He did, he did.
The whole process went through the park committee. They voted on, decided what they wanted to do.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That, that's all very public too, they got eight minutes. They don't take their meetings, but they had eight minutes.
It went to the parking minute, right?
Okay, so the park committee decided to take it out.
They only made the decision, they never brought it from the board.
And then, did somebody tell the park committee it was okay?
They, they actually, I don't, they didn't move the motion, they didn't move it. The motion that they made was to accept the grant.
So then why did they get rid of it?
They had to, that's where it was supposed to go. Did you read, did you take the time to read all the grant and the requirements, everything?
You didn't, you didn't read it.
Oh my gosh!
Yeah, how many times did I ask for a copy of it? I didn't get one, but how many times did I ask for a copy of it before I got it? I got a copy of it after the piece, your piece of equipment was purchased, it was in. Then I get it out.
Everything that I had, I posted back there, that was a big diagram you're talking about, was not there for more.
That had the half to incline on it.
Right, but we told you from the get-go that that was just a place marker, that was just one potential option.
But we're not gonna tell you what we're gonna put there, it's gonna be a secret.
Well, it's no secrets, the point is they have that, they have it.
Okay, plain and simple, let me, let me tell you this. For the money that they spent, that we got a grant for, on that hurricane spinner, we could've, there was nothing wrong with that merry-go-round, we've already stated this. We could've bought a brand-new one. If they wanted to get a new piece of equipment to go in that park, we could've bought a brand-new one, that every kid from two to ninety-nine year play on, okay? Kids under sixteen years old can't reach that thing.
Well, a couple of months ago, the motion was moved, that they were gonna put it back in, so they were still talking about it.
Yeah, I remember you guys saying
But it now has cost the township more money.
That is on the record, they
It is gonna get put back in, but ultimately, it's costing more money, there's no reason about those
What, what?
I haven't seen any estimates to where this money's going or anything.
Why'd you go across the body and put it back in?
Now we have to make the park bigger, okay, we have to make the park bigger, we have to buy edging. One of the plastic edging goes around the park to make the actual footage, square footage of that park bigger. So now we need to buy plastic edging, and we have to buy the cloth, it doesn't need to keep weeds from growing up, okay? Then you have to buy mulch. Now you gotta put this piece of equipment back in, whether it's gonna be, you know, concrete, whatever it's gonna take to put it back in. It, it's gonna cost money, it's not free. You know, so, it's, it's gonna cost something. Which it shouldn't cost anything.
That's right.
It, it should've, there's no reason we couldn't have both on there, I'm not against having that thing.
Really?
But that can serve us older kids. That can serve us older kids that come to that playground.
He's always saying, he's always saying he didn't mind it, we could've had both, he's always said that. So why don't we get the thing fixed and put it back in?
We're working on it, we're working on it, we're doing.
Yep. It was gonna, we, we talked about putting it back in April, I said we'd put it back in April, but didn't happen, we're gonna get it back in
I wasn't able to work on it in April.
Yeah, we'll get it back in
Try.
So what are you gonna do with it, are you gonna put a governor on it? You can put a governor, make
I'm gonna rebuild it, get that wallbo out of it.
There was some concern for lateral movement.
That's what you're saying, lateral
Well, yeah, also the governor, how are you gonna deal with that?
We don't
Wasn't one on there before.
Sally, hold on, Sally, go ahead.
Was the grant just for equipment?
It was just for that.
Just for that?
But it didn't cover, but it didn't cover the whole cost, I don't know.
Speaking of that, uh, forgot to mention, uh what's his name, Chris, Chris Meyer? He called a couple of days after the meeting, and wanted to know about payment, and I told him that the check was cut, did you send the check? So he hasn't paid for at least a portion of this now? Cause there's no chance for money, you have the balance for it now? No? They said he talked to you already, so
I spoke to him. I, I just laid it out, let him know the truth, told him what happened, how it happened, and I just said, I, I, I just wanna be honest with you, Chris, and tell you what's going on. You know, it's, it's a shame that, uh, a business man kinda got
We probably should do, but Jesus would do it just for devil, Mr. Corpenny, and move on.
Well, don't you think that we
Can't do that, this is government, Jesus can't come into government.
So what are you saying here, you're not gonna pay the balance, do you?
I'm not cutting the check to
Did you, did you make that clear, Mr. Meyer? That you weren't gonna pay it?
No, I didn't make any, I didn't make him any promises or anything.
Or if you pay for it, Jeff, he signed for it, he does not pose a sign for none.
Can you follow up with them, maybe you can explain it to them?
I, I don't need to follow up with them.
I mean, it's just a matter of time, you don't pay your bills, the business isn't gonna tolerate that, they're probably gonna take some kind of action.
If you wanna follow up with them, deal with it.
He's like kinda in or something just in the middle, isn't he?
He performed
Good Mr. Meyer, a hundred percent asked to do it. I agree, he had no idea.
Somebody has to pay him, somebody has to, cause he did what he was asked to do.
Yes, I agree. I agree, but. There's people that say, I've had numerous, don't pay for it, don't pay for it, it was never voted on to, to purchase that piece of equipment. How can, how can I, anybody sit here and legally cut a check for the balance of that, that was never legally voted on? You know what, I'd like to have a new tractor for the township, can I just grab a pick and run it tomorrow and bring it back to the garage, spend thirty thousand dollars? That can't happen.
You're implying again that something illegal was done, nothing illegal was done, that the.
Who made the vote here to spend the balance of eight hundred dollars?
The county inspector's opinion on that clearly states that, that it was sloppy on the part of the boards, but it was not illegal.
Boards?
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 Boards, committees.
I get, I get a question, but, my question is, did I elect the people on the park committee?
Did you?
Yes, did I, were they out there voting for it, did I vote for them on that park committee? Who did I vote for? I voted for the people sitting at this table, so ultimately, the responsibility comes to the people on this table. Mr. Corpeny has chosen to be the high active man in the park committee. He is the one that ordered all this stuff, nobody at this table approved that amount of money that had to be paid. So ultimately, who pays for it? Not me.
Well, yeah, you do.
Somebody else should be paying for it that signed for it. That park committee. And it needs to come out of their pocket, not our pocket.
Well, we could take a little trip down Pat Cracker.
We're not talking to you.
We've had other grants, we had another grant that was just like that one, Operation.
Not talking to you.
And it was for fencing. If you go back and you look on the records, you'll see that that, that whole thing wasn't done by proper motions and things like that.
Right.
And so, you know. I, I totally agree with, goes back to what Chris Meyer.
My, my opinion is, is I'm not gonna say that I legally signed a check, the balance of that, that was never.
Okay, well, I think that everybody in charge of this group should pay the man and then take action against who you think should repay you. Because you can't just not pay a person that did the work.
But initially.
Then you have to take action against Jeff if you feel that you need to.
I, I agree, I agree with that, the man should be paid, but I can't legally sign a check, cut a check for him for regular dollars, when it was never brought front of the.
It only takes two signatures, so.
That's why I'm in it, if you guys wanna sign it right now.
Initially, several months ago, there was, the grant money came in, China reported that township accepted the money. There was a check that came in for the total amount, and it was on our, on the back of our, our, uh.
Seventeen hundred four dollars, I believe, is what it was.
And I, I signed that, and they never, they, they wouldn't, and didn't, then another check came in for a partial amount, which I think was last month. You weren't here, Dan, who signed it, I don't know if you did or not. Uh, Mr. Meyer, I'm assuming he got that partial check eventually?
Yeah, I had no problem signing the grant, Mike.
Does it take all three signatures on a check for somebody to cash it?
It's two, it's two.
Okay, okay, I, I got that.
Jeff didn't sign that, it was April.
Yeah, yeah, he saw that last, last meeting.
Are you the man? Is that looking real, ever, go ahead, Ron.
How many times have you guys, uh, write the check, maybe employing, and it don't get signed by one trustee? And it just sits there, if it wasn't for two trustees signing it, the employers would not be paying something.
How many times it happens to all?
It happens all the time, so he's worried about this guy eighty-four dollars that should have even been done with, given with. But when an employee does their work, he's not worried about signing their checks. So, something don't even out. I don't understand.
Are you signing checks now?
Yeah.
Are we?
I'm, you're all right.
All day, I relax.
We're still don't probably comment, I ain't listening.
Money from the park committee going to the general fund, or is there a separate park committee fund?
It's in the general fund, but there's an account, a separate account in the general fund that I put it in.
It's earmarked.
So there's money in the park committee account?
Yes.
Why can't that money be used to pay for something to reinstall or to pay off?
Yeah, why shouldn't it, it should.
That's where it would be.
It should come out of the park committee.
All the money to reinstall that other equipment, that, that's where it will come from.
Go ahead.
That was, that was the motion already, it's got the cap up to fifteen hundred dollars, I believe.
What's the eighty-four dollars?
Come again? That's the balance, we paid, we sent him a check, we sent Mr. Meyer the check for, I think it was seventeen hundred four dollars, that was the grant money that we received.
So we still owe a balance to the.
Approximately, it's a little bit less, it's seven hundred.
I don't see how you guys cannot pay it, I mean, you know, it's there, we don't want to let Steve or like he does, he don't want it checked.
I, you know, I, the man should be paid, I agree.
We should, we shouldn't be playing games with the human being. If he did his job, you guys think he did his job, a hundred percent. You know, we shouldn't be like Mr. Corpeny.
Then Corpeny should pay for it, he paid out of his pocket, we shouldn't have to pay for the extra.
I see, he should pay for a lot of it.
We didn't want the thing in the first place.
For what, done what he was supposed to do.
So we, the township shouldn't have to pay the additional settlement, it should come out of his wallet.
Paid for nothing, and nobody else is bitching about it besides me.
Yes, they have been, sorry.
Right now, right now, somebody's guarding it again.
They've been bitching for months. You are mistaken.
So, so I got a question for you. So, so after this piece, you know, piece of equipment, it's already in, it's already been installed, it's there, it, it's not coming out. So should we make a motion to go ahead and approve that piece of equipment to be there?
Is that, yeah.
Is that what, is that what you should do?
Can you alter it, that it can be used better?
Can you alter it?
Yeah, can you make it.
It's probably several times, it's, it's, it's the ground brought up to, to these bags, that's supposed to be sixty inches.
There may be about eight inches of mulching, that's not, that's not gonna solve hardly anything. But I'll be honest with you, I'll be honest with you, I did look at the special, it is installed correctly. It is installed correctly.
But it's not, it's not the ideal, from the ground to the handle.
But it can be very easily, with some mulch, and we pull the mulch back, I've already said this, it's like a rerun.
You always run the rerun, Jeff?
With some dirt back, and collect it, and put the mulch back on top of that, so it's solid. But eight inches of mulch there, it's still gonna be, it's as high as that door frame, there, there's no kid under.
The specs are sixty inches on the low side, from the ground to the top of the handle, the other side's eighty-four.
Eighty-four?
That's a range, and that's about where it's at.
Okay, so they start at the sixty inch side.
They're not sitting on it, they're hanging on it.
Yeah, hanging on it.
If you take sixty inches.
Okay, so picture this, and it's tip like this, and you start on the low side, where's gravity gonna take you?
Back to the.
To the low side, so guess what, you're not gonna go there.
You're not supposed to be dragging your feet on it when you go around.
Do you wanna demonstrate?
Get your ladder, show us. Get your ground on.
And then when you get to the other side, you just drop?
And break your neck.
How do you get to the other side?
No, generally, there's two kids on it, Barb's reports, you've seen kids playing, I've had a good time. It's not a merry-go-round, it's a different type of piece of equipment.
I have your attention, sir.
And it is safe, it's, they all the.
I, there's no.
It's not safe.
You just can't use it, yeah, that's safe.
But the merry-go-round, most of the time, it can spin it off.
Yours, go ahead, Bob.
I think I'm gonna need a little bit more time on getting these, uh. When, when the health department man, who was a very nice gentleman, it was, it, it, the man of character. He told me that, when I told him what I was doing with this material, but he said, that is not waste. And I showed him that I was selling this material, it's a salvage, recycling material. And he said, it, it was not solid waste, but I need to get it more well organized. And I, and he talked like, I, I don't know how much time that he would take, as long as I was doing something, but I need an official.
We, we never.
It's been, the one that's been so nasty, I'm ready.
Do you remember all the meetings that we came to and I kept saying?
What's the date?
What's the date, what is exactly what needs to be done, what is the date, what is it gonna exactly needs to be done? And then Barb said, when you put tractors and stuff out there as lawn ornaments, then you're gonna make the neighbor mad. But our tractors are tractors, they're not lawn ornaments, but that makes somebody next door mad because we have tractors, but they're still on our property. And the health department didn't have no problem with our tractors. It was just something about you had to chop up wood smaller to burn it, you could burn it this way, you could burn it this way, and we were far enough back, but he still calls the fire department anyway. And then it was, uh. He told them we had dead carcasses back there, and because we don't have trash cans out there, we must be burning solid waste. See, this is must be, they must be, they probably are, we think they are, you know, and he doesn't come back there, he doesn't know. Fire department comes back, they said, I don't see any problem.
We've been back there a lot.
Then they leave, okay, so tomorrow he's coming and he's gonna take pictures and he's gonna say, now, each time I come, if it looks like it's changing, then it's okay, I'm working with you. But then, he said, by the time it gets to where he doesn't have any, any say in it at all, I need something from the township saying exactly what I told him. At one time, you all said, okay, if it's inside a building, or if it's covered, it's okay. And he said, well, then you need to get something, uh, from them in writing saying what they, they say is okay.
Well, it states in the zoning, that, you know, about the cover and whatever.
It's not okay.
Right.
Okay, so.
A tarp is not cover.
If what's not covered?
A tarp is not cover. Structure is cover.
Cool, okay, no problem, move on.
So. So ultimately, you're asking for more time?
So he said it was okay with him.
This is a health department inspector, he's key?
Cause he said, he, solid waste, which is metal. There's nothing. Wrong with anything except pieces of cars and trucks and, and ten, ten aluminum and brass and copper that's laid in certain spots that I have not, you know, it's thirty years of putting things saved for my retirement. They piled up, and it has been real bad all winter long, and it's all spring.
He doesn't have any problem with him having it, it just doesn't want it to get so much where it doesn't look like he's taking it regularly, that's what he said.
I've shown him papers where I've sold it.
Did this get turned over to the health department?
Yes.
If whole case is turned over to them?
This whole case is being turned over to them.
But we don't know.
What they're telling me is not what the inspector told me. I will have it in writing shortly.
Why, what I wanna know is, if you all said, we're gonna work with you and you saw receipts that we were taking it, why did somebody in the middle of that process call the EPA and the health department?
It's been going on.
I don't think anybody this board did.
Who did?
Mr. Rosenberger.
I have no idea.
Now I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna get out of here. I think that the park committee has no right to do nothing, they gotta bring it to you people, and then you exchange it, that should be in the minutes.
That's how.
Not Barb, not Jeff, not you, and not Danny, all three.
It's a rerun, it's already come out.
Well then, why is he messing around with stuff, like Barb signed the stuff?
And then it's not.
Why didn't they make a decision to take that out?
This is. Month after month, and there are motions on the votes.
You had no right to.
Who are talking to him right now?
I was sitting in like, he's a dresser.
You have no right to do nothing, you know, if you got the other two with you.
Right, alright, it, it, if, that's how, if we made a motion to do that, nothing is gonna go through from, away from the park committee unless it's brought from this board.
Orf has no right to sign, I don't care, I'm sure he stands.
Yes, I stand, yes, that's, I agree. I agree.
To get back to that.
So, so none of you, nobody in this room called the health department and the EPA?
No.
Nobody, nobody, not, not the either of ours, you didn't call them either? The EPA and the health department?
Well, we talked, but I didn't call them, you didn't call them.
But you're working with health department.
Yeah.
Continue to work with health.
But Howard should have known that because he's always asking for an update on our business, so he should have already known that we were trying to get it all moved.
Howard's the neighbor.
But I know he did.
Who's Howard?
The guy didn't have to tell me, I could, I could tell.
Who's Howard?
I could tell he did, the Howard's of the neigh, that it's not Howard, it's Call Call.
Okay.
Howard Holden's?
Howard?
He calls, I mean, some nosy body or whatever, it's the next door neighbor that's affecting their property, that's the reason.
Quiet down.
Okay, he calls everybody on us, he calls the fire department, he calls the EPA, he calls the health department, he calls anybody and everybody that will listen to him. He wanted the house trailers to be removed, and that didn't work out, so he's still on his grant page. The man that came over said, I don't even think that you got that big of a problem, except for him.
Well, if you guys are working with the health department, that's fine.
We are.
Continue to work with the health department.
Okay, but I wanna know if any of you.
I don't think we need to set, I don't think we need to set actual, I don't think we need, right now, need to set an actual timeframe, like a timeline for you guys just working with the health department. I'm sure we're getting a work.
We've got to see where it's, that's all on them, I haven't been to do it, their deadline with me was December the first, and I've seen no change.
Okay, so you're.
I've seen them adding stuff, but no change.
But how could it be December the first, when that was the date it was before we even knew what was supposed to be moved?
They got it in letter, doesn't matter, that was their letter and they.
Okay, but the letter said, our tractors, our, our, our.
That was information that requested after you got the letter. Information after they got their certified letter.
And then Mr. Corpeny said, how does that fall under junk cars? A, a, a drainpipe?
Did I say junk car, at no point in time would you under junk cars?
Salvage yard, okay, how does the drainpipe fall under salvage? How does my sign out there fall under salvage? And how do the tractors, and how does a running car with license and tags fall under salvage from junk cars? That's what we never got established, so, no, I didn't think that we.
And also, I'd like to let you know, I was on the phone with them for almost an hour explaining everything to them, it does not matter.
It doesn't matter, no, because it's not right.
Because I've said it a hundred times, and they're, they want what they wanna hear, they're, they're, it doesn't matter what's in the book, it doesn't matter what the law is, they want everything changed for it.
So.
Okay, alright, alright.
Alright, so I'll, I'll remember they got turned over to the health.
I want Barb to explain what you all consider the salvage and junk cars that's out front. What is salvage?
I have not charged him on any junk car, or a salvage car, okay? They got their letter, it's main, it's operating a junkyard in the salvage yard, okay? That's what they got it on, it's all in writing, you got copies.
But there was a list, and you all have a copy of it.
You asked for the list, the specifics, that was the prosecuting attorney, she's the one that said this.
I wanna know what the list is, tell me the list.
You have a copy of the list, I.
I want you to, I want you to say it.
I don't have it here.
You should have.
Call me and help, and I'll have it, I can't roll my file cabinet with me, I'm serious.
I'm gonna tell you what it was.
Do you have your copies?
It's, it's.
See, I didn't think you guys.
It's our car that appears inoperable, which has license plates and tags.
Is that on the list?
It's on the list, okay?
It's a white car.
The sign out there that you put letters on, it's on the list.
The sign was lifted over.
The drainpipe is on the list.
Under the ground, coming up, through the ground.
Drainpipe coming up through the ground, okay?
I have photos, would you like me to bring you our photos?
And all, and all our tractors, because they haven't.
You guys have it all.
During the snow, because we have not baled any hay during the winter.
But all, really, all this got turned over to the health department, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
He doesn't care about any of that, only the tires and.
Then that's what we need to worry about, right?
No, we still have a case against them on all the junk lined up against the road, which has not moved two years.
It doesn't matter, we haven't baled any hay all winter.
Two years, okay, two years. This stuff has stayed there and been growing. I have proof, I have the photo.
Okay, I have some, too, and you're gonna be real busy.
She is the one doing it, prosecuting attorney.
Every one of them tractors was running in the fall, every single one, every single one.
That car, it only runs for twenty years.
You don't know that.
But I have just a couple of comments, not, you know, telling me.
But we're trying to figure this out, I mean, I, I just.
Well, I understand, but if they would pick the phone up and call me like they've been asked to, they might get more answers. She gets off track, she's not remembering the stuff I tell her, so it doesn't matter to me.
There are tractors, they run, they were all in the auction, they all.
Recovered after the prosecution.
And I have two witnesses that started every single one, they had it lined up except one.
Shame the devil to tell the truth, except my flagpole truck.
And there are tractors, and it's our property.
You know, func, functional tractors, they should be.
And they're our property, they're not on Howard's.
Can you explain it to them once, or you know?[1667.64]
Okay, you tell us where that all set to moving, moving down, where, tell me where.
Functional tractors should not be on there.
They're agricultural, and they run, and the car out there, they appear inoperable. You never tried to start it, you never looked for the tags, you never looked for nothing, it runs.
You don't?
Well, it has tags on it, and it runs.
You don't know what I do.
So what's the next step?
Next step, next month, I'll bring it to you. Well, you might, you're definitely letting the next step is. There you go.
The tractors, do I have to move those tractors where she wants them, or where Howard wants them on our property?
It's not where I want them, prosecuting attorney said under-
Do I have to move my tractors where the prosecuting attorney wants them?
If they're functional, I would say-
They have to prove they're functional, we have yet to do it.
They, every single one of them was started during the auction and lined up in the middle of the field and now they're all moved.
They have yet to prove that they're functional, except one.
My flagpole, I'm a patriotic dude, it's my flagpole, you know, it's, it's pretty old tractor.
This whole township would be a lot cleaner if people didn't, didn't concentrate on us continuously, 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 because there is all kinds of violations, and one of them is a zoning inspector, they took us to court the first time. There's all kinds of stuff in his fields, all kinds of, and it was there then too. It was, it was already there, and it still is. And there's tires right at the end of the road, there's no potatoes in them, and there was no potatoes in them all winter long, they were holding down a tarp. And they're still there, only they're back behind the building.
So, where do you want us to take the tractors off the list, like you want them to-
I, I don't think the tractors should've been on there in the first place.
If they're, if they're operable, functional, I don't either.
Prove it, again, prove it, nobody says-
They're my tractors.
Nobody says-
Prove it or not.
Come over, let me show you they're running, they will go off the list, and no point in time, all they wanna do is argue and complain about it. It's it, it is their job to prove they're functioning.
Well, you can-
Not my job to guess and sit there and wait for them to move one. Now, I'd be mad if I sat around and could watch them pull them out.
How about the auction here, what was, what was this thing?
Call the auction here.
No, prove it.
The zoning inspector can call my helper.
Prove it.
The zoning inspector can call my neighbor.
No.
The zoning inspector can call Howard.
Hey, quote me, I'll show you.
Every single one of them was in the auction.
And I'm not gonna argue with you about this, honestly. I sat Amy's office several times with her, and she did say that, she said, "It's not the township's job to prove it, it's you guys' job to prove it, that they are functional, operational, or whatever."
How many people in this township have to prove that every tractor on their farm runs every day? You wanna go down to the sorbs and pull his out of the barn and see if they all run?
And they were in this barn, did you hear that, in the barn?
Please don't interrupt.
Don't interrupt. You keep interrupting me. This, every time I say something, you interrupt me, you shut, you shut.
Stop.
Now listen, there's farmers that do not have their tractors put in the barn, I'll go out and look for them, okay? I will, I will go out and look for them, I will look for every tire on every property and every junk car, and I will write up every single one of them, and when I all have to do something, I will-
I do, start with the prosecuting attorney.
You don't, you're hot.
There you go, Ben, see?
She's blind when it comes to her friends.
Not blind in nothing, I'm sorry. Ben, you sat there, she's got it, she approved it all, and it's coming to you next to go for her to, to be pursued, unless Licking County Health Department wants to pursue it. If he wants to pursue it, their prosecuting attorney takes it over, it's all out of my hands.
Yes, sir, but why don't you five gentlemen come out to the house tomorrow, when the health department dudes there?
I have to work tomorrow, I'll, I'll be done after Saturday.
I don't wanna hear it, sir.
If the health department has some kind of actual allegations, and report at some point, they're probably gonna give it to the township. And if they don't have anything, then we won't.
He just said if he sees anyone down, he takes pictures, he comes back, and looks different, it's under control to him, as far as he's concerned, now that's what he told me, and it wasn't, and he, when, when he came over, he looked at me and he said, "I was expecting an awful mess by what people said, this don't even look that bad." That's what he said to me.
So you work with the health department, so that's a non-issue, you work with him, that's good, you work with one, but, but you worry about tractors, what's your-
I wanna know why it's not everybody in the township, it's only a couple, that's what I wanna know.
It's only a couple, because it's sort of a problem.
Because why? Because only two people keep complaining? Well, that's too bad.
Let, let me ask you, let me ask Amy if we can take them off there, you know, if they're oper- operational, functional, I have a farm, if I'm gonna sit in the field, I'm gonna sit-
Prove it.
You know? But I think that's what she's gonna say.
Well, how about the car that's just down the driveway, road from us, little green sporty black car, that I think has been there for a long time, and probably don't even have any tags on it?
Get the address.
You know, real, real close.
The address, you're, that's what I'm saying, your eyes are closed. I can't just sit up, can you explain my job?
I'll talk to Amy.
I do not do personal stuff, this is straight by the book, that black book.
We're done.
It's only because people complain, my person complains, continuous, continuous, continuous.
Public comment's over?
No, go ahead.
I'm done, I mean, I just wanted, I mean, it's not more, I'm done with it.
This has been eighteen years of the same thing.
Go ahead.
Now, I say that.
Go ahead. Well, wait, I'm gonna move.
I just wanted, you know, on public comment, just three minutes, and you talk, and then one minute, we go to one, I mean, you know, like twenty, twenty-five minutes, or just one thing, so I just wanted to bring that to attention.
That is too bad. Until it's settled, it means so.
If we're more like this forever, we should have a private conference meeting with someone, not, oh, what, that is, uh-
I, I apologize, it did go on, you know, on for long, that shit up, but, but I'm on work with everybody.
We've been persecuted for eighteen years, so half an hour ain't nothing.
Alright, like I told you before, just for a quick, a little quick, I don't wanna get sidetracked.
I'm sort of a rebel, you know, I don't like to push around.
You know, I could've done something a long time ago, when that dog was attacking my monster kid and attacking us, I could've shot that dog. At his.
Any other public comment?
For a second?
I'll say, I'm like-
No, we have now, please, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's right.
I won't hit you very hard.
Did it hurt? Huh, did it hurt? I got all night, Jeff.
We never get a, we never get a straight answer from anybody.
I'm not trying to pass it off.
I'm, I'm telling you, for this, I'm tired of it.
Right.
First certificate for natural gas, that's two thousand dollars. Second one is number seventeen dash two thousand thirteen, non-faceted services, fifty-one thousand, one fifty-eight forty. Fire department, right? So the fire department's in town yet?
Yes.
This appropriation is four thousand dollars for operating supplies, fifteen dash two thousand thirteen.
Just president, I'd like to get one more question.
Two.
I'd like to know if I can get a report on, there was two other families that got, uh, uh... Certified letters at the same time that we were here, could I possibly get a report on what happened to those?
Certified letters, uh-
They had to move stuff.
They had to move stuff.
In violation?
Is, is, is the public, is it like the end of records?
The health department guy was going to the boat man's place too.
Oh, what's that?
He was going to the boat man's place.
Boat man's- Two dash two thousand thirteen, fifteen hundred dollars machine repair.
It was one up there on forty.
You knew, I, I didn't either.
The guy had those?
But you, you had a photo at one meeting, the two gentlemen at court.
I'm trying to think, I know, do you want a copy of that?
Did you make them two gentlemen clerk, or did you, uh?
No, one other prosecutor, um, stated that it was a non-issue. The other, I think it's still, what we discussed tonight, it's still a number.
But you were supposed to be fined a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars a day, if you do that?
Nah, I don't know what-
Four two oh one, some town trusties, seventeen thousand.
It's still-
Fifty-two dollars, eighty cents.
Somebody called the health department on a nine forty-two, because he went there.
Four one nine four, Daniel Nelson, Ben Baron, six twenty-one.
People live in glass houses.
Here's, here's one, one of them's a non-issue, it's done, okay?
Four one nine six, one nine nine two seven cents, Lowe's company.
The house trailer.
The house trailer's okay?
Yes, because they're not hooked up in utilities or anything like that, so, um, the other one was, um... The update was, no actions were taken from prosecutors outside of the, the health department was called by a local resident, the health department will contact me after their investigation.
Four two oh one, three eleven ninety-nine, healthcareable, healthable.
So you can have a house trailer if it's not hooked up there.
Four two oh two, case with rental.
And I, and I know where you're going.
We had a house trailer just to put our hay in.
I know where two oh-
We were told we had, we had to move it.
Temperature touches seven thirty-five.
Completely, completely cut it out, nothing in it.
That's what I'm saying.
Four two oh four.
Howard called and wanted to sign that, we were told we had to move it. We had to move it across the creek and put it where we didn't want.
I have a question for you.
As soon as it come down the driveway, he was all-
What is it?
Four one nine one.
No, you don't have to pay now. No, you just said anywhere here in Brownsville.
Hey Jeff, Jeff, can you hear me? Hey, Earth the Jeff, can you hear me? Can I hear you? Would you like to discuss this? You threw, no, you threw the other file, it's in the monitor.
You're free to set up anywhere you want to. You're welcome.
I don't know if we do or not, but I was there, and I just purchased them.
Why did we go there?
Hope you enjoyed yourself.
See you, guys.
For the record, Ben, Howard told Barb, and Barb told us we had to move it.
Four one eight eight, intro four, and having some-
Is it named Howard?
Nine oh three ninety-eight.
Bobby's calling, he's calling. Howard comes.
I don't know, I know last name.
Yes, he, yeah, yeah, on a good night, he'll be sitting out there drinking a little bit and shooting towards our fence line.
Drinking a lot.
Yeah, drinking a lot and shooting towards our fence line.
Four one eight seven, buck fifty-six ninety-two, Hudson Valley Limestone.
I wish he'd shoot towards Zemina, so.
Four one eight nine, two fifty-eight thirty, Ohio Public Anarchy Distorting. Four one nine zero, Smalls Ascol Paving, one seventy-eight twenty, gold mix.
I'm watching, see that, you know, check on the- That's a very good round.
Four two oh seven, football county trustee, seven thousand fifty-two cents.
You like being the head of the department every day? Why do you keep there?
Four two oh eight, seven thousand two dollars, eighty cents, National Trailers, Howard's apartment.
You couldn't be me enough. I'm gonna do it for nothing.
I'd do it for half. No, second.
I just-
I'd do it for half.
Okay, so now you know that they said that was a non-issue, the house trailer was not hooked up, or was we even have a letter saying we could just like that? From the living county?
No, I gotta go get the dog, dude.
I got a dog coming to get a fox, and he's coming to get two foxes, so.